It's not like you were talking, but it's time to start the meeting. And welcome to today's work session. Want to thank everyone who is here in the audience and all those who have tuned in online. And Elizabeth, can you call the roll, please?
Mayor Harker.
Here.
Mayor Protem Kuber.
Here.
Commissioner Gilligan.
Here.
Commissioner Lepicolo.
Here.
Commissioner Oliver.
Here.
Commissioner Spiegler.
Okay. Before I ask for a motion to approve the agenda, I would like to change the order and take number three, which is a Beaufort Wine and Food Spirit Event, and move that to number one, and then everything else will follow. Unless there's any questions, can I get a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So move.
If you've got a motion on the floor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alrighty. Now, we're going to start with the Beaufort Wine and Food Spirit Event. We have Rachel to present that for us.
Good afternoon. So today, we have our event request for Beaufort Food and Wine to return to the downtown area for the 2026 event, which would be April 16th. They're anticipating they'll sell about 700 tickets. They would be utilizing three private spaces. What their ask is, is for use of public roadways to be able to cross back and forth to those locations with open containers. So they'd be using the Vault space, BHA space, and then also the Watercraft Center. Of the 700 tickets, two of them are VIP, which the VIP event is being held at the Watercraft Center. So it'd be about approximately 200 people who would need to cross over Front Street for that activity. It's got two different routes that have been proposed. The preferred route is Route A. It is the most direct route for participants. And we do have the event applicant here, the Executive Director of Beaufort Wine and Food, Brittany Pittman, is here as well. I'm happy to answer questions, and then also she's here for additional ones.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Rachel? Commissioner Gilligan.
Rachel, when you say 200 people, we're talking about like 200 people, not all at one time, crossing the road, or is it all at one time?
So the event hours are one to four for the Vault and the BHA sites. And then there's a band that concludes for the VIP at six p- four to six. So it wouldn't necessarily be all at the same time, but you would have people migrating to that area right there around four o'clock.
Like kind of pulses of people at different.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for Rachel?
Rachel, you've spoken with the Police Department, I would imagine, with this. And what is their preferred route?
We have gone back and forth about it, but I believe right now, I don't want to speak on behalf of Chief Burdette, but I believe right now that he's comfortable with the first one, the first option.
Yep.
I got a thumbs up.
Rachel, you know, we have a lot of construction going on in town right now on our roads, and we're going to start with the Fuel Farm in January. Have you all discussed how that may impact the event?
Yes, we have, in great detail, actually. And we thank the event organizers too, because they actually submitted this earlier this summer when we were still trying to figure out construction on Turner Street. We believe that the Turner Street construction will be complete by that time. We do not know if it will be paved yet, so there is a potential that Turner Street would be a little rough, which is another reason Option A would be better.
So we have Ms. Pittman that's here. And would you like to add anything to that application? If you want to come up to the podium, please.
I think Rachel's covered most of the bases here. You know, we started in downtown area back in 2005, and I think it would greatly increase our ticket sales. I think it'd be our best year yet if we could bring it back down there. And we give back proceeds to the community, funding projects, government and non-government. So I think it's in the businesses' best interest, our best interest, and the community's to bring it back downtown. And we've got a lot of Beaufort businesses on board. We tried to bring it back downtown last year, but it didn't work, and everybody was really disappointed. So I'm doing my best to get it there for 2026, and that's what we're looking like. And yeah, we're real excited. We'll have a shuttle service as well from the Beaufort Hotel, their event parking lot. We have a lot of guests that stay there, so we'll shuttle people in if they do not want to contend with parking and traffic, so they can get dropped off right in front of the event area there, particularly those that are not as mobile. They won't- they have that as an option. So we have parking worked out. We also have vendor parking worked out. We will be renting the parking lot from the Ann Street United Methodist Church for our staff and our vendors. So they'll be parking close by for them for unloading and loading purposes. That's, I think that's about it. And I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Yes. The tickets, what's the cost of the tickets?
The tickets range, it's a multi-day event, but for this Saturday event, where we're going to be utilizing all of these facilities at one time, is a hundred dollar ticket. It will probably go up to 110 for 2026. We have not increased the price of that ticket in probably seven years, so it'll probably go up to 110 this year.
Any further questions for Ms. Pittman? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alrighty. All right, seeing that there is no further questions for either Ms. Johnson or Ms. Pittman, the request today is to either approve or deny the application, but there's Option A and B, and it sounds like Option A is what the staff is leaning towards. So I'll let the board deliberate and look for a motion when you're ready.
I'm not wanting to say no to it, but my question is, is that I think is, once again, there's a great deal of the community that is not going to be involved because of the price, a hundred to 110 dollars. There's, there's a lot of people around here that's not saying that by April, I don't know if things are going to be better or going to be worse, but if this is an event that is being put on with the Beaufort name attached to it, then we're really going to be missing out on a lot of people in the community.
So forgive me for not pointing this out earlier. This event is a little bit different than traditional events that come before us. It is a private event, so that is with the ticket price, whereas traditionally, when we have an event that's out, it's, it's open to the public. But this is a-
Please come up to the mic, please. Thank you.
Though, though we are a private event, we are a nonprofit in the community. And as I said, our mission is to generate proceeds to better the community and fund the projects. Most recently, we donated about $6,000 to the Beaufort Fire Department for their instructional inflatable to support their educational initiatives in, within classrooms and with students. So though it is a private event, and you do have that price point there as a barrier of entry for everyone in the public, those funds go back to the public. We will be announcing soon, I guess I can announce it here, we're going to be presenting a check at the Oyster Rose for the Bridge Down East to purchase a new van for them. Their nonprofit after-school program that, that serves the Down East community, very similar to the Boys and Girls Club. We have given over $250,000 to the Culinary Arts Program at the college in the last five years, 1.3 million to date. So, you know, our core mission is to serve the community, and our, the purpose of our events are to generate funds to be able to do just that. There are plenty of, there are a lot of events in the community that serve a lot of different populations, and our target demographic may not be everyone, but everyone certainly benefits in the end. That's the purpose. So I hope that helps explain that some.
It, I mean, it does, you know, and I'm not, I, we appreciate the donations and the charitable stuff that you give money towards, but still, you know, it's, you know, a lot of people are going to be thinking in so much as that here it is another event. Private as it may be, it's still another event that shelters out a good portion of the, of the community.
Sure. I understand that concern. And, you know, this is just one of many events we put on throughout the year, and none of them are free per se, not to say that we won't do one in the future, but our target demographic is 21 years old and over. It's not, they're not geared towards families, so to speak, because the nature of them, they're all-inclusive, they include alcohol in the ticket price. And so we do have Restaurant Week that I started three years ago, Crystal Coast Restaurant Week in the winter, and that is not a non-ticketed event, and that's open to everybody. You simply just pay, you know, what you're, what you're eating at the restaurants that participate. So we do have other events throughout the year. This just happens to be one we'd like to bring back downtown, and there's a lot of support for it with local businesses and our attendees as well. So I just leave it to you guys, and hopefully we don't, I mean, we're, you know, we're on private property. I'm just asking that we go from A to B to C without having to make sure when they leave A that they don't have a drink in their hand. Otherwise, we will just have a lot of signage, and we'll make sure our attendees are educated, that they can't go from A to B to C with the drink in their hand. I hope we don't have to do that, but, because I think it would affect the experience some, so that's why I've come here to you today.
Okay. All right, well, that's-
Thank you.
Great explanation. Appreciate that, yes.
I was just going to say, thank you for all that you do for the community, and it is very fun to have events downtown. I would just, I'm really glad you've submitted this early and worked with the town. I would just say, you know, when the time comes in the spring to be flexible and work with the town again, in case some of our timelines get pushed back, and just make sure that it's all, you're understanding, and as I'm sure you will, cooperating if we have some construction that's still ongoing.
Alrighty, so we're still back to discussing this a little bit further. Once again, this is either to approve or deny. If you are to approve, Option A and B is on the table, but once again, Option A is what the staff prefers, and what is a pleasure of the board.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Option A for the Beaufort Wine and Food Spring Event as presented.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor. Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed have the same right. Thank you, Ms. Pittman. Appreciate it. Appreciate all that Beaufort Wine and Food does for our community.
Appreciate you being here well in advance. It makes it so much better knowledge for, for everybody in the community, but it also helps our staff that you're so far out in front of the, of the events. Thank you.
She is, isn't she? We don't do her horn enough. All right, so now we're going to move on to the UDO Coastal Resilience Overlay District Draft, and we have Michelle to present with that, and representatives from Smith &amp; White.
Good afternoon. I'm going to turn things over to Kelly for the most of this, but I just kind of wanted to give some background. On our UDO project, we began in about June 2024 with our code assessment process, and that was about six months. And with that code assessment, we moved to Phase Two, which is the creation of the UDO. So that began this January, and that's about a three-year process. We're moving through the first of our five different modules in the process. And at the end of creation of the fifth module, we'll look for adoption of all five modules, the whole document together as one. So as we move through the process, we'll be looking for approvals from the Planning Board or from the Commissioners. Not full adoptions yet. That's going to come at the end of the process, but tonight, we're looking at this component and looking for feedback and potentially approval, especially as this component is funded through the Resilient Coastal Communities Program. And we're looking at the end of our year grant deadline, and Mackenzie Todd is with us from the RCCP program to see all the hard work that we've done. We're actually the first community to do ordinance work with that grant funding. So we're really proud to be on the cutting edge of everything. Without further ado, I'll turn things over to Kelly.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Board of Commissioners, Kelly Kuzno with White Smith Kuzno. Looking at my computer here. I'm excited to be with you today. I'm just going to go quickly through the drafting process so far. Michelle mentioned we started work back in January. And then I'm going to cover the revisions that we've made to the draft since we saw y'all last at the joint work session with the Planning Board back in August. We also met with the Planning Board in September, and I'm going to present their input on the draft as well, and then talk about our next steps. So we've had six Steering Committee meetings specifically for the Coastal Resilience Overlay, two community conversation, open house events, and then, of course, our joint work session and the Planning Board meeting that I just mentioned. We've had some more meetings, community events this year, just for general outreach on the UDO project, but this just covers the, the meetings that were specific to this overlay district. We started with the Steering Committee. We presented a proposed resilience approach, gave the committee some additional information about resilience point systems, which was one of the approaches that we talked about. The committee considered both an overlay district and that point system as alternatives to implement resiliency policies from the Town's Comprehensive and Camo Land Use Plan, ultimately deciding that an overlay district is the best approach for the town at this time. So we vetted a draft through staff and then prepared a preliminary discussion draft that went to the Steering Committee and the community. We've revised it a couple of times based on input from the Steering Committee, the Planning Board, Board of Commissioners, and the public. And we have the fifth draft that is before you tonight. So since we last presented this in August, we've made several revisions to address your input and the Planning Board's input. The first is a couple of additions to the Purpose Section at the beginning of the document to recognize the designation of Beaufort's downtown waterfront as an urban waterfront. That's through the, that is tied to the CAMO regulations. And then also clarify that sea level rise is as measured by NOAA. We suggest keeping the names of the sub-districts as originally proposed, so the CR-NIZ, the Non-Intensification Zone Subdistrict, and the CRM, the Moderate Hazard Subdistrict, because this overlay district is a zoning tool, and we want to clearly distinguish it from any floodplain regulations. But the draft revises the descriptions of those sub-districts for clarity. So we've included one that these will be the boundaries of the special flood hazard areas and non-special flood hazard areas as of the adoption date of this ordinance, whenever, whenever that is. So in the future, should, should the board ultimately decide to adopt this overlay district, it will sort of freeze the boundaries at that time. And if the FEMA maps change, it would require a text amendment to change the boundaries of the overlay district in the future. And so we've also included the, sort of the common names of these areas. So the NIZ is referred to sometimes as the 100-year floodplain, also the 1% annual chance flood hazard area, so we've clarified that here. Same thing with the moderate hazard sub-district. It's the 500-year floodplain or the 0.2% annual chance flood hazard area. The draft continues to prohibit new critical facilities in the CR-NIZ sub-district. This revision clarifies that improvements that do not exceed 50% of a structure's replacement value are allowed for existing critical facilities. This revision is not a substantive change. We just reformatted the impervious surface coverage limits as a, as a table. So instead of having six or eight sentences of text, we've just sort of condensed everything into this table, so hopefully it's a little bit easier to read. But again, no changes to the, the percentage coverage standards that were in the earlier drafts. Okay, so the, again, the Planning Board met September 15th to discuss the draft that's before you all this afternoon. They started out with a couple of sort of general questions. This excerpt you see on the, in the frame on the side of the screen there is an overview of the downzoning legislation that I know y'all are familiar with, that we, we included this summary at the beginning of the overlay district drafts. The legislation still stands as it was adopted late last year. There are a couple of bills pending in the legislature that could revise the statute, including one that restores the ability of local governments to downzone property. This was a hot topic at the Joint North Carolina-South Carolina American Planning Association Conference a couple of weeks ago. And the bottom line is that nobody really knows what's going to happen with this legislation, whether it will be revised. Everyone in the state seems frustrated with the lack of clarity in the statute and the effect of the statute in its current form on planning and zoning in the state. So we, we drafted the overlay district to achieve the town's goals and policies related to resilience and the NIZ and to meet the Resilient Coastal Communities Grant Program requirements. But as your town attorney noted at the Planning Board meeting in September, we will need to revise the overlay district if the statute doesn't change. So we're just, I guess, at this point, just all going to sort of stay tuned. And as Michelle noted, the plan is to request that you all adopt the UDO at the end of the project, so we'll have some time to make revisions to this section if we need to, to respond to the statute or for any other reason. The Planning Board also raised the question of whether federal or state-owned land is subject to zoning and thus the overlay district. Federally-owned land is not subject to zoning, and state land generally is. However, there are some exceptions in the North Carolina General Statutes in Chapter 160D, including that state land is not subject to overlay districts unless approved by the Council of State. So the short answer is, in the context of the CRO, federal and state land would be exempt. So the, I'm going to go through nine suggestions from the Planning Board. I wanted to note that they, the Planning Board did not reach consensus on all of these topics. This, they didn't take a vote or make any formal recommendations to you all. So this input came from one or more members of the Planning Board. Again, there was no consensus on it. They just, these were the issues that they raised for your consideration. The first is to remove the residential use limitation in the CR-NIZ. So the overlay district in the NIZ sub-district prohibits all new residential uses except for detached, single-family residential uses. There is also a density limitation of five dwelling units per acre. And some of the Planning Board members felt like if there was a density limitation, that the use limitation was unnecessary. One of the footnotes, 18 or 19, depending on whether you're looking at the Redline Draft or the Clean Draft, proposes a definition of pervious surface that will be included in the Definition Section of the UDO. It include, the, the definition includes examples of pervious surfaces, and all of those examples are taken from the definition of built-upon area in the North Carolina General Statutes. However, one of the Planning Board members suggested the definition should exclude Number 57 Stone as an example. I think the concern was it can become impervious over time, particularly if it's not properly installed. The bulk of the Planning Board's input relates to shoreline buffers, and in particular, the provision regarding removal of invasive species within the shoreline buffer area. Number three here is to reduce the minimum required size of planted trees. So the draft requires minimum either two-inch or three-inch caliper, depending on whether you're planting medium or large trees. Planning Board members suggested that that should be reduced, that three inches is, two and three inches are pretty large trees. These next three involve the removal of invasive species. So there's a provision that discourages the use of heavy equipment when you're removing invasive species from the shoreline buffer. Planning Board suggested defining heavy equipment so that everybody's clear what that means. And then there was some concern with the use of the word discouraged. I think we've talked before about how we like to stay away from sort of optional things in a regulatory document. A previous draft prohibited the use of heavy equipment in removing invasive species. The Steering Committee expressed some concern with that, because there are some instances where that's the best way to remove invasive species. So they wanted to allow that. The Planning Board also suggested requiring essentially a protection zone around trees over a certain size in the buffer to, to ensure that they're not damaged during removal of invasive species, particularly if you're using heavy equipment. Under allowed uses, one of, one of the allowed uses is utility line penetration through the buffer. The Planning Board suggested clarifying who determines what the minimum width necessary is for a utility line penetration. They suggested the town engineer. And then also to clarify that those utility line penetrations could include electric and water lines running to a dock. I think initially, when we set, when we said utility line penetrations, it was like power lines going across a waterway. And finally, in the Stormwater Retrofits Incentives Section, there's one, is the third one listed here, related to the installation of rainwater harvesting features that can allow you to reduce the width of a shoreline buffer. Planning Board suggested adding for such uses as irrigation. And at least my interpretation of what they were saying would essentially require both harvesting rainwater and reusing it in order to qualify for this particular incentive. Okay, so this was our Module One schedule, and this includes all of the meetings that I mentioned earlier, not just the ones related to the CRO. This is our last scheduled meeting on the overlay district. As Michelle mentioned at the beginning, we are seeking general consensus from the Board of Commissioners, either on this draft or this draft with some revisions, so that we can sort of put this to bed and move on to Module Two, and then consider adoption at the end of the project. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Okay. Who has a question for Ms. Kuzno?
Will the public have another opportunity to comment on this? On all the revisions that the Planning Board went through as well, or are we done with public comment as well?
Theoretically, yes. I mean, if y'all, y'all aren't considering adoption until the end, so there's two more years, really, that we could incorporate input, but we are, we don't have any more planned. really, that we could incorporate input, but we don't have any more planned events, public outreach events related to the overlay district.
So I guess, how do you see this going? If we have specific ideas or recommendations of the board, and we'd like to, you brought up several different items for discussion and for debate, how do you see that traveling through the board? You see that happening this evening? Do you want us to come back to you? Do you want us to, how do you want us to give you our input on those specific items that were kind of like on the fence? The planning board was on the fence, they wanted direction, you'd like direction. How do you see that happening with us?
Sure, Michelle, you can, do you want to take that one?
If through discussion tonight, some adjustments need to be made, I can come back in the November Board of Commissioners meeting for that final approval, and we'll still meet that grant deadline. But we don't plan on sending anything back to the planning board, because as noted, this is not a formal adoption process, and we'll have the ability to continue reviewing Module 1 as we move through Modules 2 through 5.
Now, can you speak to the fact that you're asking us to, at least, once we go through deliberations, to consider drafting this because of the certain purpose of being able to have this draft in place for the Resilient Coastal Community program? That there's a deadline on that? Can you speak to that real quick for us?
Yes, yes. We entered in a contract for that 12-month grant November 18th last year, so we're hoping to not request for any extensions or anything, because we are fairly close to the end. And we know that the draft document is the deliverable for that grant, and it's understood that it could have some adjustments within the next two years, especially with downzoning, if that ends up changing the landscape of everything. So this would be the deliverable for that grant.
Okay. But even if the board decides to agree to this draft, it doesn't necessarily mean they can't come back and make adjustments afterwards?
Correct. It's not adopted at this time.
All right. Yes, well, I think it's Commissioner Gilligan was next, I'm sorry.
Thank you for finding out about the applicability of the overlay district to state lands. I know that was a specific question I had about the Rachel Carson Reserve, not that we're going to do anything that would violate any premise that's within, but it's a good clarification. So does that mean the district is still going to be drawn around that, and it just doesn't apply to state and fed? Or is it going to be redrawn?
I suppose we could do it either way. If we excluded the reserve, we would need to probably modify the description, because the description of these sub-districts are tied to the special flood hazard areas, so we could essentially just sort of plug in an exception to that.
Okay.
But I guess we might need to clarify in the text.
Right, or just notate that without council of state approval, that the overlay district doesn't apply to this reserve or something somewhere.
Right.
But either way, I'm okay with either way. I was just wondering if you had a suggested method of making it clear.
Yeah, I don't, offhand, I can't think of a reason that one approach would be better than the other, so I think it would just be whatever the board's will is.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, speak.
I just want to say thank you. I know how long this process has taken, and y'all have done a really great job. And thank you to those who are on the steering committee as well, sitting up here and also on our planning board. I've had the opportunity to listen to a lot of the discussions that have gone over the past year, and there's been a lot of thought and consideration, so I just want to say thank you to everybody. This is not an easy process, and there's, like, we are the first town going through this in the grant program, and so we are learning a lot as we go. In terms of some of the points you put up, items of discussion from the planning board, unless we heard more, I think, about why we would need to change the draft, you know, I think our steering committee really went through a lot of these points already, and so I was pretty comfortable with the recommendations. I know one of them is, you know, in the NIZ, in the non-intensification zone, do we need both density and residential use notations? And, you know, I think for the public to understand as well, this non-intensification zone, we're really trying to limit some of the uses, because this is the area that is the most vulnerable and most likely to flood in our town. And that's, you know, the number one important thing to me, is that we don't allow critical facilities to be built there, and that means like schools and hospitals and things that if they flooded, it would be very detrimental to our community. And I think that, A, new critical facilities are prohibited. I think that's extremely important. But we also, you know, we don't want to put our citizens at more risk in this area as well, and I think that was part of the discussion around Part B, in that new residential uses, they can be built there, but we're going to put, you know, what kind of use in there. And I think that was the intention there. And so, you know, we want to encourage development in our town to places that are not as risky, and we want new development. We know it's coming, and, you know, we want to make sure that we are helping people build in those areas that are most appropriate, where they're not going to be at the most risk. And so, you know, we do have land left in our town in those areas that are not in the floodplain, and so we really want to see commercial, we really want to see the higher-density uses in those areas. Not to say that you can't build in the NIZ, we are still saying there are appropriate uses for building in the NIZ. If you already live there, you can stay there, and, correct me if I'm wrong, you can rebuild after a storm, as long as your home's not damaged by more than 50% of the footprint.
Correct. There are still provisions to rebuild a single-family home.
In the NIZ.
In the NIZ, correct.
So we are still encouraging certain uses in the NIZ. So we're not saying you can't build at all, but we do think that we want the critical facilities to be encouraged in less risky areas, and, you know, this is why we went through, or why the steering committee really went through this discussion. And so I just, I wouldn't be wanting to change that right now unless there were some really, you know, good reasons for why we should do that. So that's my input.
Any further questions or comments for Ms. Kusno?
I have a comment. I noticed that, you know, in the past, my concerns have always been about protecting homeowners and business owners from, you know, being penalized from storms, natural disasters, especially if they have to rebuild if the structure's been damaged by more than 50%. But, you know, this still has language in it that if this were to go into effect, properties that are business owners in our community that have their lots paid by, paid more than 50% will be non-conforming, correct? Correct?
Right.
So I was hoping that we could put in a provision to help protect property owners, business owners. We've done that, it's kind of been a double standard here, because we do have provisions in here for single-family homes, that they're protected in the event of like damage and so forth, but we do not have any provisions in here for business owners, if they are subject to storm or some kind of natural disaster, that they would then have to rebuild and then go ahead and rebuild up to the newer standards, which for a lot of these lots, we're looking at 50% to 60% lot coverage, correct? Instead of, you know, now you may even have the gas station at 100% lot coverage. So I think, you know, that should be considered as well, and to allow for those lots to be considered non-conforming but accepted in our community. So that may, that's just sort of the recommendation, or something that I'd kind of have been thinking about in this. And I know that you're kind of pretty far ahead here, but I think that'd be something worth considering as well.
Sure. I will note, with respect to the impervious surface limitation, it does exempt lots located in the historic business district, the historic waterfront business district, and R8A. So that does cover a lot of commercial properties in the town.
But as far as live oak and all the properties.
It's not the historic district.
The zoning district, yeah.
But there's just a lot of other businesses in the community that have been here for a while that now would be non-conforming. So that's, my concern is for them, that automatically, as soon as it's passed, they'd be a non-conforming lot, they'd be out of, and then, like I said, if they had, if there was a storm or further damage, they would have to bear the burden of getting into compliance, going into compliance. Now, if they did decide to, you know, renovate on their own, I think that's a different story. That would be, this would be something I would.
Commissioner Oliver?
I really don't know exactly where to start, so I'll just, won't do it in a particular order of it, but the actual request tonight is somewhat being, is somewhat taking on a more urgent because of the potential of a grant. And I'm sorry, but I don't think that we should take any time in accelerating this consideration of this because of that grant. It's not that I don't want to see grants, it's just that I think that is, if you would, putting the cart ahead of the horse. One question that I have here is that my understanding, if I'm correct, and Counselor, I look to you largely, is right now, North Carolina state law specifically states that no downzoning is approval by communities.
That's correct.
So I have a very hard time morally promoting this at all while it's against state law. Secondly, I have an even harder time asking for a donation of $100,000 from an entity with a document that violates state law.
Understood.
I just don't think that's the way we do things in Beaufort. And some of the particulars, in the 100-year floodplain, we have somewhere in it just slightly greater than 900 tax-paying parcels today. And what we're saying, though, to those parcels on page 12 of our program, page 10 of yours, is that under allowed uses, and it's very specific, and I think you are crafting it, and your wording is very specific and very well-done. I don't happen to agree with you, but I respect you for the skill in crafting the words that you've done. And it says, "Any use allowed except, one, new critical facilities," which we have all talked about what critical facilities are, "are prohibited in the NIZ sub-district." That's a lot of activities, and there's people and entities that are not represented, in my opinion, at all in this discussion. The second exception is new residential uses other than detached, single-family houses. That comes back to Commissioner Lipikolos and other comments. For instance, what about a duplex? Why not a duplex? And then you get into the next section, which has got a little bit of a double negative in it, but it basically says that renovations, repairs, or improvements, less than 50%, it's got a double negative in there, unless it's single-family, which then it can be more than 50%. There are a lot of homeowners, and this is NIZ, and it also has some shaded X, but I don't know how many homes are in the shaded X. I do not think that our population and our citizenry understand the specifics that are set out in those paragraphs, and that we, as a board, have a much higher burden to gain the input of those people. I will share with you that recently, as this has become more known, I sense we're going to start to see much more discussion on that from our citizenry, and I think frankly, that to a large extent, no complaint with your consultancy, but I think to a large extent that this is a wolf in sheep clothing. And I think frankly, there's some cleverness going on when we start designing between use and density, and what a town can do and what a town can't do. So I think we need to step back and really, one, make sure that each one of our landowners in the 100-year and the 500-year AE district understand exactly what this means, specifically and in detail. And as far as today's action is concerned, or the November action, whenever we're going to talk about it, I'm sorry, but I think we can't be tempted by the temptation of $100,000 grant deadline controlling this discussion. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Any follow-ups on that? Any further, yes, Commissioner Gilligan?
I understand your concern, Commissioner Oliver, but I am wondering if we include some descriptive language in that deliverable about our strategy to work with or without 160D being in place. There is a good chance that it's going to get amended. We have a lot of legislators that are paying attention to that. But I understand what you're saying. It does sound bad when we talk about taking money from a state entity while we're violating state law. It's not our intention to violate state law. I think we need to state our intention. State the status of 160D and our work related to that, and then say that we will make adjustments as necessary when we go to implement the entire UDO. And I think we can also acknowledge that some of these issues, there's still the need for consensus at whatever level, if that's acceptable to the Division of Coastal Management in our deliverable. So I think we can just make it clear in our deliverable that we're not done yet, but I do think there is a need for that.
And I respect your comments. I will share with you that I have spoken to the representative of House Bill 281, Celeste, and I have her permission to speak to you upon, you know, second-hand information, if you would, but her comments are that she has no expectation that any of these bills will move this year, that it'll probably be in the short session next year, and that she is extremely worried about the property rights of owners. And she's a legislator pushing the Carteret exemption under House Bill 281. So I, and in addition, like so many of you fellow commissioners, if you read the Coats Cannons, it's not exactly black and white. They are pointing to the fact of unknown unknowns. And therefore, a known known is that it's against North Carolina state law. An unknown is that they may change it, and it may be still under North Carolina violation of state law, or it maybe won't be. Depends on what the legislature considers. But I think there are other subtleties in this, and perhaps other agendas in this, that make me even more worried about it. And I think that one of the things that the law says is that no property will be diminished without the consent of the owner. I consider a value, a change of a property without the consent of the owner, I define that as a taking. And I don't think this board has any interest today, or in the future, or in the past, of promulgating what would be thought of or perceived of, or actually materially happened as being a taking. I don't think that's what we want to do. And I think there are some, perhaps, who principal interest is to stop development. I'm not saying this board, but I think we need to look at this with a long vision, and especially doing it in conformity with North Carolina state law.
I have a question, Kelly. So you said you were at a conference recently with South Carolina and North Carolina planners, so I'm pretty sure we're not the only town in North Carolina or South Carolina that's going through these uncertainties. And it is, it's very challenging, because like you said, it's very vague, and we don't know what's going to happen, but how are other towns sort of dealing with these challenges? Are there other towns that are trying to plan as well, like we are, with, as Commissioner Gilligan said, understanding that we have to be flexible in adding language to that extent, but also, we don't want to be hamstrung in what we're doing and never be able to plan for the future at all? So do you have any experience, or can you share what other towns are doing?
Everybody's doing something different, from what I've seen, and your town attorney may have more information, but I've seen there are some communities that are just moving forward, almost as if the legislation doesn't exist, maybe with an expectation that it's going to change. A lot of folks are just sort of stuck in trying to decide what to do. We're working with another community in North Carolina that they're done with waiting, and so, you know, they're reevaluating their codes and kind of seeing what they need to change in order to bring it into compliance. So there's really, there's just, people are taking a range of actions in response to it, but you're right, I mean, you're, every community is having to decide what these terms in the legislation mean, you know, it just talks about changing the number of permitted uses, what does that mean, and decreasing development density, what does, you know, what does that mean? So, the actions that communities are taking will depend on how they're interpreting the words in the statute.
Thank you.
I don't have a question, I just have some concerns about, now, this draft, are you looking for the approval from us in terms of for the loan or the grant?
Just for the grant purposes, yes, sir.
But I have some issues with the LID and then your stormwater retrofit, I mean, I don't particularly have a question right now to ask you, and just in my reading, I just have some concerns, and maybe later on come back, or I'll speak to Michelle and have her address that for me. So, but that's, that's a statement, I'm not asking any questions, anything at this point.
Okay. All right, so in order to move this conversation forward, I just want to make sure that the board has as much information as possible in order to make the decision that they will need to make, whether it's to approve this draft and maybe change the language in it to be in compliance, but I do have more of a legal question based on what we've just heard. We don't want to be in violation if we approve something that's, everything is up in the air, right? And then we don't want to turn over a document that's a draft that we may say yes to tonight, or may not, to an organization that may, will say, you know what, we probably need a little bit more language. I don't mind if, do you mind if I call on you for any reason? Nevermind, okay. Where are we at with that? Because I don't want this board to feel like they need to make a decision that's not in compliance with the law.
Well, the lawyer part of me says you're approving a draft, so you're not approving anything that's binding tonight, if that's the pleasure of the board. You're approving a draft to submit for grant purposes, and as long as the grant awarding agency is clear that this draft probably will change, and may change significantly going forward, I mean, I think that protects us with the grant writing agency, of course, I haven't, or the grant giving agency, I haven't seen any of those documents, so I don't know whether or not that's true, but I understand the discomfort, I mean, I don't think that we could adopt this overlay district tonight in a binding fashion in light of the state law as it is now in 160D. There's no question about that, what the General Assembly does or does not do over the next two to five years on this topic is anyone's guess, but, I mean, I think legally I could get, I am comfortable with approving a draft for grant submission purposes, as long as the grant awarding agency has acknowledged that this may change, and perhaps significantly after the fact.
Okay.
Well, if we're not binding to it, it just, I mean, if this was coming to us as in a solid form in terms of this is it, then there was no way I would give a yes. But in terms of being a draft, that's not, that we're not binding, that we're not binding to, I don't see, I may not see a problem, but there's a lot of language in there, like Commissioner Oliver stated, as well as Commissioner Lipikolos concerned with, as well as a couple of them that I am concerned with, so, I don't know, I just sat through.
Yeah, I think the missing part of the analysis, perhaps tonight, is exactly what does the grant application say, and what does the grant award say? And I just have not been privy to those documents, but we certainly can give them a thorough review, if the board moves forward in that direction tonight, or at the first meeting in November.
All righty.
And again, I'm a little, I'm a little sensitive that we don't have a clear recommendation from the planning board, and I'm specifically concerned that we don't know anything from the 900 taxpayers who are affected by this decision.
Yeah, I mean, they gave a lot of, I mean...
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, sir. I couldn't hear you.
No, I was just saying, in terms of the planning board, the number of nine, I guess the concerns that they had, or recommendations, or however they laid this out, but...
Yeah, I'm concerned, I mean, if the draft is lacking provisions, or doesn't have specific consensus on items, I feel like if you approve the draft, it just kind of allows that draft to kind of maybe even move forward, you know, and by inertia, without coming revisiting the draft on those topics, and things that I brought up, and things that Kelly brought up as well. And as I said, but that being against the state law, I'm definitely not in favor of it in the draft at the moment.
All right, but the draft currently is not against state law?
Yes, it is.
Are you saying yes or no?
Yes, it is.
If we took final action on it tonight, yes, ma'am, we would not comply with state law, but, you know, what's being asked tonight for grant purposes is to give the board's approval of the draft, knowing that it may very well change on a whole host of topics going forward, but again, the board's comfort level in doing that in light of the grant application and the other issues raised this evening, I'll just leave to the board.
Yes, okay, I just want to make sure they have a clear direction as to where they're heading before they make a decision. Now, it looks like the deadline is November the 18th, and I don't see we're kicking this down the road to the November 10th meeting, it's going to make any big difference between now and then, so I will leave that decision to the hands of the commissioner as to whether you want to take action on this or not.
Well, here's just a draft.
May we ask Mackenzie if this would be in compliance with the grant, or if she would like to look at that and get back with us?
Please, yeah, I didn't want to put you on the spot, Mackenzie, but...
Hey, good afternoon, Mackenzie Todd, Coastal Resilience Coordinator with KAMA, running the Resilient Coastal Communities Program. I would say from the discussion tonight, the, in the contract language, I would want to go back and make sure I don't have all that memorized, but the intent of the draft of a unified development ordinance to submit to us to get your final reimbursement is that the, the draft would be almost exactly what's going to be adopted. So, maybe my recommendation would be your eligible for a grant extension, six to maybe 12 months, if you want more time to discuss this, but I think, like you said, Commissioner Gilligan, if there's a provision in there when you submit that says, you know, these elements may change by the time we adopt, that's maybe something we can talk about internally, because we, like we said, we don't know what's going to happen with the legislation. But I think there'd be concern internally if we accept a draft that then's going to completely maybe change in a year, that's maybe something we would just need to talk about further.
So the application extension for this grant, how do we go about doing that if that's what the board wishes to do, to extend the grant application? Is that something done with staff?
Yes, ma'am, that, Michelle would just contact us, and we can get through the paperwork on that.
How much of an extension, please? I'm sorry, I wasn't in my, what type of extension is potentially available?
So, it would be a no-cost time extension, and I believe they can go up to 12 months.
I couldn't hear you?
12 months.
12 months, thank you.
That's a little bit better, I think we're feeling a little heat up here about the rest of it, but we do want to be able to move forward with the grant program, but this is, as you already are hearing, is a little sticking point, so we want to make sure that we're doing things the right way. Any questions for Ms. Todd while she's here? Thank you, Mackenzie, I appreciate it. Yes.
I just wanted to emphasize the need, I brought this up before, for a Q and A document. There is a lot of narrative that is being created around this, and I understand why, because there's a lot of misunderstanding, and it's really hard to interpret this information and not come up with a false story. So, I really think we need an FAQ document, you know, will my land get taken if blah? Well, the answer is no, but we want to be able to explain that, and explain citizen concerns in that way. Now, that's what the community conversations was for also, we did have those two community conversations, so Commissioner Oliver, I think we did get some public feedback and some public engagement, but of course, we didn't reach every single landowner that is going to be, or could be affected by the overlay district, so I think the FAQ document would go a long way, and just ask, putting out specific questions about if my home is impacted this way by a storm, or if my business is impacted this way, I think we need to do some interpretation. I don't think this is a wolf in sheep's clothing, I don't think there's the intent to take property or stop development, I am pro-development in the right way, and I want to protect our citizens for what we're experiencing now with storms and into the future, so I just think we need to intervene in that narrative that's floating around, and that's a natural thing to happen when people don't understand things, but I think we need to get out there with this FAQ document ASAP. Thank you.
I would second Commissioner Gilligan, this is really technical information, and the Steering Committee, they've discussed a lot of really technical details, you guys have done a really great job, a lot of it has been talked about in the community conversations, but not everybody can attend those, and I think we need something that brings this really technical information to a much more understandable level, and not everybody in town, most people in town don't have time to attend these Steering Committee meetings, and even if they did, it's so much information, so I would, I would agree, I think, you know, the more education and information we get out there about how this will benefit the town and what it all means, I think that is, that would be a great tool for our community.
Sure, and there are some FAQs on the website, but we can certainly add to those and make, and, you know, put it as an attachment to this document as well, just to make sure that it's right there with the regulations.
No disrespect intended, there are some people who do not do things on websites.
Sure, understood.
Who own, who own property here.
I would say you guys have done a great job, this may be some, something for the town to do as well, thinking about other creative ways to get the information out there, you know, we have our newsletter, we have our Facebook page, but it may be some other avenues as well, so it might be something for us to think about, too.
Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to request staff to apply for a 12-month extension of the request for $100,000 grant for the Resilient Coastal Communities Program.
Okay. All right, so we've got a motion to extend the grant offering while we work things out. Any questions about that, any concerns? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Cusino.
Thank you.
All right.
We really do love you.
And we want to say thank you.
Again, we're all trying to... That's how much we love you.
We're going to have to probably speak up, I don't think, yes, okay.
That's good news, isn't it?
That's, no, it's not good news. Do you need a second? Okay, we're going to move on to the Taff Family Ventures sewer allocation and workforce housing agreement, and we have Mr. Garner for that, thank you.
Are we still having Kyle, technical difficulties, Mayor, or am I good?
I think we're pretty golden, Kyle. Everything works for you.
Oh, boy, I'm waiting for lightning to come and strike us.
Is that Jim?
No.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So before you this evening, as you stated earlier, this is a request from the Taff Family Ventures Group for sewer allocation and a workforce housing agreement. That was actually one of the very first bullets I had, the board wanted the title of that, and specifically, our attorney wanted to change the title as to what this agreement actually is, and that is included in the draft that you have before you this evening. I think it's also important that in the agenda item, you were given two copies, you were given a redline copy, and you were given a complete copy, and I thank Ms. Lewis for us putting in the redline copy, because it shows you exactly what those changes were that the board requested. I have just a full, a few bullet points that go along with that. Number one, of course, I've already covered what the title of the agreement would be. Number two, dealt with the period, number one, that they would not have short-term rentals, but yet they did say that they would have rentals no shorter than three months, and that was one change. The third bullet I have is that copies of the applicant rental criteria and next available unit policies and procedures applicable to the project for the period of this agreement are attached in Exhibit C and D, and I will actually go and talk about those in later bullet points, but those were two documents that the board requested, you wanted to see a standard rental agreement as to what the criteria would be. I had to go through, I felt I was doing a 1040 tax form this afternoon, but I did go through it and make sure I understood what was going on there, and then D was very specific to Beaufort in regards to if someone is applying for the workforce housing element, how many units are available, what is the criteria that they go through.
Right.
The next bullet I have is dealing with the performance data, which originally they had in their document that we would only receive it twice a year, but they added the language at the board's request, that if there was a period of time that we wanted it more frequent, that they would provide that more frequent, so that has also made it into this document. Again, the next bullet I had was Exhibit C, which was the applicant rental criteria as to what the standards were, based on the different levels of meeting the income level that they had for renting each of the units. And then D, which was the medium income set aside and lease up for the next available unit policies and procedure. This was a very specific question that the board had, such as if there was a unit that came available that would be in the quote-unquote workforce housing group, in one of those 10 units, but let's say they didn't have anyone immediately apply for that, what was the period of time that they would have that they could rent it to a regular at-cost rent, and then the next, the next available unit that would come up would be put aside for the workforce housing unit. I appreciate them putting that in there, and I think that made sense, from what the developer said originally, all of the units are pretty much, well, they are the same, the same materials and so forth, so even though a person would take on one of those other units later on, they're getting the same style, same appurtenances and so forth in that unit that someone else would have. So, Mayor, where we are this evening, and I looked around, and I don't represent Taff Group, I represent the town of Beaufort, and they are not here this evening, and I think from the correspondence that the attorney had, as well as other staff, we were expecting them to be here, but you do have this updated document, and as you pointed out earlier, it's not just the workforce housing agreement, but there's also the element that goes along with this for the sewer allocation that Mr. Bell provided with you earlier. So with that, Mayor, I don't know that I can answer any more questions than the information I've gone over already with you, but I will certainly do the best that I can.
All righty. Any reason why the Taff Company? Had they not provided any kind of explanation as to why they're not here?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Which I find odd.
Yeah.
So, and our attorney is nodding his head, so I'm not putting words in his mouth, but yeah.
I find it the same as well. Okay. Any questions for Kyle?
I know you don't represent them.
No, sir. I represent you.
But they did say in terms of the workforce housing, that it wouldn't be in a particular field to set aside.
That's correct. That they would be throughout the project.
Throughout the project.
And, sir, if I'm going to get real specific for you, the lady to your left, your immediate left, was the one who actually requested that when we originally sat down with them.
That it'd been separated in different buildings.
And that way, you have people who have no idea.
That's right.
Thank you, ma'am. That's all I got.
Kyle, this is going to be self-regulated, correct, as far as timing? If someone leaves and someone comes in, Taff will be doing that themselves. There's no oversight on that. So we just have to trust that this is being done.
Well, I believe that there is oversight. If they're providing you that data at least twice a year or as frequent, you'll be able to see through that data who those people are and how often they're moving through. So yes, sir, I think that this board will have that information in front of them. Yes, sir.
Even timing as well, timing for someone for application, when they moved out and so forth.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
All right, good. Thank you.
Any questions from down here? Okay. Well, we've got two requests here. One's for sewer allocation, and then one is to approve the housing agreement. Do we need to handle those separately?
Mayor, I would.
Okay. All righty. So we just heard about the housing agreement or workforce housing agreement. What are we calling it again?
Sewer allocation and workforce housing agreement.
Okay. So the sewer allocation part, we haven't had a discussion on that one. Is that something you... Well, we had a discussion at a prior meeting, but it's something that we need to approve separately. Okay. So considering Kyle just went through a great deal of explanation about the workforce housing agreement draft, we'll handle that first. Can we do that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
May I make a motion that we approve the workforce housing agreement that's set forth in the document?
We've got a motion to approve the workforce housing agreement draft. Can I get a motion? Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, very good. Now, for the sewer allocation, I can't remember what the allocation amount is. Hold on.
Mayor, I believe it was actually in the contract.
It's in the contract, too?
Excuse me, in the agreement. And...
Yeah, I'm looking. I don't see it.
I think it's covered.
It's covered in there? And we still wanted to handle that separately?
I would go ahead and take action on it. Since you tabled it at the last meeting, it is technically a separate request out there. I think the agreement does cover it, but let's clean up the record in the minutes.
Okay.
And Mr. Bell is here, Mayor, and that is for $16,380 gallons per day. And I want to confirm with Mr. Bell that that is...
Yes, I haven't received any new information from him, so that's the number that he provided.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Good question. Sam, on their part, are they going to need to contribute anything to that for any pump stations or anything like that? Or do we need any upgrades or any improvements to allow for that at that location? And is that something we would discuss? First answer.
Good evening, Commissioner. Yes, that's certainly something we can discuss. We haven't received any further plans or specifications from them on their specific design. But we can assume that it'll include a pump station and some public sewer lines.
At their expense.
At their expense.
That's all part of the development. Lift station will be at their expense.
And it's not specifically stated in the contract, but according to our sewer allocation policy, they would have to put up 20% of their calculated sewer impact fees upfront to reserve that allocation.
Which station?
For a period of 24 months.
Which station are they going to...
Oh, that's a good question, Commissioner. Without the specific plans yet, we don't know. There's two options, either lift station nine or lift station seven.
Both of which currently have the capacity.
That is...
That's what you said at the last meeting.
That's correct. There has been a...
But...
Yes.
Have you finished answering his question?
Yes, I'll just add that lift station seven is currently out for bid, the replacement project.
Right, that's what I was about to ask.
And the current lift station does have capacity. We have had some more recent problems with lift station nine, but we're working on those currently.
Okay.
So although that if the board does approve the sewer allocation, there is documentation in place, although it's not in this particular agreement, that the expense is borne by the developer?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
All right.
It'll have to be a written, it's a written agreement, it's provisional setting. It's for a certain period of time.
For 24 months.
24 months, and it's a... Am I correct, Mr. Bell?
Yes, sir. That is correct. Period of 24 months, they pay the initial 20% now, once it's approved. That reserves it for a period of 24 months while they complete their plans and specifications. Then, once their final permitting is complete, they would pay the rest of the system development fees and as well as pay the cost of installing all the equipment and piping.
So I'll make a motion to approve the allocation in accordance with the request that was tabled at the last meeting, as requested.
Okay.
Which is a class... It's a reservation, not an approval.
It would still be, it would still count towards our allocation.
Yes, sir.
It would still be adding 1%, 1.1% to our...
But they have a reservation, it's good for 24 months.
Yes, sir. And if they don't use it, then it reverts back after that, but yes.
You've got it. You're sharp as a tack. All right, we've got a motion on the floor. Any questions about the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now, we're going to move on to something fun. Everything was fun. Beaufort Town Doc's logo selection. And we've got Commissioner Gilligan who's going to present that.
Oh, we're going up to the park, aren't we?
That's a hot one, I tell you. I've been there.
Good evening, colleagues. Nice to be on this side. It's been a long time since I was making a public comment. So we're going to talk about the Town Doc's logo tonight. And by the end of our discussion, we need to be pretty firm on which logo we're going with. We can still make some tweaks and changes to it, but they need to be pretty minor. So just keep that in mind as we go along. Next slide, please. So on the 16th of October, the Beaufort Waterfront Operations and Finance Committee looked at some renderings of the logo, including one that you see on town staff logo wear and on the plaques near the bridge. So we decided to go in that direction and try to be pretty consistent with some of the shaping and style that we already had. And so they provided feedback on some of those renderings. And right after that, the next iteration of logos were developed based on that feedback. And then last week, the Beowulf provided additional information via an online survey. And so they did that individually, and then those results came into a spreadsheet that I could look at. Next slide, please. So on the right in the text, that is the comment of the individual Beowulf committee. Remember, I'm not assigning names to the comments. And not everyone made a comment, but they ranked the logo. So there were three versions. They ranked them in terms of their favorite, their second favorite, and their third favorite. And so I'd like to give Nelson Owens credit for this logo with a slight modification. North Carolina was spelled out in his original logo. And we got some feedback that, immediate feedback, that that wouldn't show up when we had a small logo, like on a shirt or something. The North Carolina would not be stitched or printed on there so that you could read it. So we went ahead and changed that to NC immediately. But I'll explain some about this logo as you read some of the comments up there. The Beowulf committee, I presented our renderings and said, "Oh, well, our town shield actually resembles the shape of a boat hull." And that was just a coincidence. And I think Nelson heard that and kind of ran with it. And so he put the fish on there and he put the flower on there. And I didn't get to ask him, but to me, the flower looks like a propeller. And it makes total sense. It makes total sense. And maybe he did the five-blade propeller on purpose. I don't know, but it looks like a propeller or a flower. And the sections or the lines down the side of the shield or the boat hull, to me, look like lapstrait construction on a boat. So I think this does have some nautical flair to it. And so you'll see the comments, there was a comment about it looking a little too busy. And another comment about maybe taking some of that curve out, make the font a little bit simpler, change to one color so we could see how that one-color print would look on our logo wear. And a comment about how they just love the maritime flair. Also, the part at the bottom was kind of extended. That is supposed to look like the keel of a boat. So next slide, please. This is where I took an attempt of integrating some comments. And I want to point out, these are not high-resolution, these are not final, these are drafts. This is me going in Photoshop and quickly in 10 minutes busting out these modifications. So this is not going to be a final logo that we would send to a printer. So I went and I simplified the text a little bit so it didn't have as many curves in it so it could be printed easier. I did one that was a little bit closer to our official town seal with the white and the blue and the white and blue. And then I did one kind of like our current logo wear, where it's just the blue sections with the transparent in between. And kept the fish, which is supposed to be a Menn Hayden. I think it needs to be a little bit dorsoventrically, like fattened. And then the boat propeller. So those are just some ideas of where we might go with the feedback. And so can we go to the next slide, please? This is the second favorite logo. And this was basically the one that was done for recent logo wear, the town signs on the bridge, but it has the date on it. So I was going to, let's see. Okay, so some people were acknowledging that I'd like to see the continuity of the logo being used. And next slide, please. Okay, back to the back one, sorry. So I didn't have time to make the fish or the flower or propeller, whatever you want it to be in this case, a solid color. But try to just imagine what that would look like if we want to go in that direction. All right, next slide. And this was the third favorite. The Beowulf committee suggested, I had another anchor on there. We took it to the committee, and they suggested a more historical, traditional anchor. And this is a kedge anchor, although we got a comment that it looks like a candlestick. And I can totally see that. It's a bit a little bit to the left, too, so I probably had my head tilted when I was doing that. A suggestion about making the T in Beaufort to the shape of an anchor. I just wasn't creative enough to make it look like a T and an anchor at the same time. So maybe somebody else might have an idea about that. Next slide, please. So this is a comparison of the first and second choices of the committee. So it shows Nelson's kind of original on the left with the edits are the second and third. And then that last one on the right is the one that people preferred second best. And you can just imagine what it would look like if we turned the fish and the propeller white or another solid color. So I want to offer those to you as our choice or a slight modification of one of those. So just wanted to go ahead and what is your reaction to these choices? And I would say probably the right three choices unless you're okay with the one on the left. But what are your reactions to that? And do we think we might be able to settle on something this evening?
Well, I know you were having questions about your fish, but the one on the far right there in the dark where it's not white, it more resemble almost like it's a shark.
Uh-huh. Yeah, it's supposed to be a Menn Hayden or shark.
Some of the ones are a wall, but they're matching.
Yeah, that is true. A lot of the ones, I'm sitting there looking, yeah, those back there don't, yeah.
They're not made to...
They have the right shape of a Menn Hayden, but they're symbolic Menn Hayden.
It's a little plumper fish.
There are a lot of people that really don't know what a Menn Hayden looks like.
So I will say I've seen these already because I was at the Beowulf meeting when we looked at these. But I want to say thank you to Commissioner Gilligan. She put all this together in basically less than a week, and I know she had a lot going on. So thank you, Commissioner Gilligan. I like all of them. I think this is great. I was going to give a little bit more background. These will go on the dock staff, it'll go on the logo on their shirt. And we want something simple, like Paula said, to be able to print. But when we put this like on the website or other places, we can, I think this is correct, we can change the background color. This does not have to be the only background color, but we need something that's pretty standard and uniform when they're on the shirts, when they're down at the docks. But that doesn't mean like if it gets blown up on a shirt or on the website that, you know, if you love this and you want it to be green or some other color, you can do that. But we need sort of one standard one for the shirt, I believe.
Yeah, they're asking for a one color or a two color.
One of the things that you haven't said anything about, but I think the color on the fourth one to the right is stronger because it's darker.
Are you able to make some notes about this because I'm not, thank you.
They've all done a great job. Truly is.
Yeah, thanks. Well, what would you wear, when you buy your Navy sweatshirt with a white printed logo? Which one do you want on there? Let's get closer to that.
A lot of it, also is going to, I mean, are you talking about a solid patch? I presume you are. The whole patch will be, I mean, a lot will depend upon what color the...
Exactly. So your background color, so if it's a Navy sweatshirt, it will likely be printed a very light color, maybe even possibly white. If it's a white shirt, it'll be printed Navy. So the shape and the style of this is the most important thing. I think, you know, staff or others or F3 can, you know, work with their creative professionals to add some colors or make transparencies where needed according to the printing or situation or the use, such as the website. Steve Bishop pointed out, we might want to make it more colorful for the website.
Flashing reds.
So is what we're picking is just a recommendation to them? Because we don't know what color shirts or what the uniform is going to look like, do we?
Right. If we could just pick a logo where you like the design, the graphic design of it, and that aren't committed necessarily to the color, although Commissioner Oliver did suggest the one on the right might be more impactful for a single-color logo on a light color. And that is pretty nautical, the right one is more of a Navy, nautical Navy.
You're talking about the dark one there, Commissioner Oliver? The one in the far right?
It's just a darker color, it's just higher contrast.
So you just update the fish and add a propeller?
Yes, that truly looked more like a flower on that one than the other one.
Yeah, it's supposed to be, the flower really is supposed to be a flower on the right-hand one, but the other two that were based on Nelson's, it looked like a flower or a propeller to me. And I like it.
I like to present it.
That looked more like a flower versus a propeller. Which would be represented in a town flower.
So when the final product is selected, in my experience, usually you'll have one and maybe even some variations of that one, right? Because you might want to have one on the website, and you might want to have some on shirts. And some are going to work better printed, like you said, with the, you know, that are more solid. And the ones that have more of the fine detail won't show up as well on the shirts and so forth. But then even for the final, final image, we'll have, I guess, multiple types of file formats, too, correct?
Yeah, so there'll be like an EPS, like a Photoshop type. There could be PDF, PNGs, JPGs.
Okay.
Yeah, there could be all of the... Yeah, there could be all of the above.
And who's going to create all of that?
I volunteer to like make drafts, if I, I need to talk to Matt or staff or see what F3 may be doing with their creative person, because it would take me some time to make a high-resolution version, but whoever does it will make all those formats, various resolutions, because you don't want a really huge file and then shrink it down, and it's going to look bad on the shirt.
Right, right.
So, various sizes, too.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree.
Yeah, so that's yet, yet to be determined. We're taking baby steps.
I think, and you know, we can put in our recommendation, but the B-Woof committee did, the top boat getters wore the ones towards the left. You know, it's up to us, we can choose what we want, but I do want to, you know, say that they did put their input in, so. Although the one all the way to the right is...
I'm fine with what the committee, I'm fine with what the committee wanted, they all, they all seem great, so I don't have any preference.
I like the one to the far right.
Back, I can understand that, I like that one.
Can you take the one to the left? It looks like it's being done in more of a transparent mode, and when I make, you know, stuff for shirts and, and things of that nature, I, I have a document where I can make it so it's transparent, meaning that everything in the background sticks and nothing else does. That almost looks like a transparent type of mode.
It is transparent now, currently, yes.
So could we actually, if that was the fan favorite, and just make it with a dark color versus transparent? Puff up your fish, bulk it up to more Menhaden style, and you already have your propeller, that could be a good compromise.
Yeah, you may want to take the fin off, because I don't, I don't think they have, I don't know what the fish looks like.
Yeah, that's a Menhaden fin, those are Menhaden fins, it's the right interpretation.
Those are, yeah.
Every fish has a fin.
It looks like a shark.
You know, the logos, as you're coming in on the Turner Street Bridge, there are, it is the one on the very far right, essentially, that's where that came from.
Well, I keep my eyes on the road.
Well, okay.
When you're, when you're at the bar at the hotel, it's the same thing, it's a Menhaden.
Oh, same thing. Either way, okay. Could that be done if he, if everybody seems, if the committee seems to vote on the, the one that Nelson did? Could they make the, just make it the same color as the one that's way on the right that makes it darker?
Mm-hmm.
Because right now, we're looking at a transparent.
Yep.
And then keep everything else the same, and then you can update the font.
Okay.
Good job.
Mike's second, yes? Anybody else committee-wise back there?
I'm good.
Sounds great.
Dexter? Thank you.
No, no pressure. So are we talking about the second from the left?
Yeah, which one are we talking about?
Yeah, which one are we talking about?
Number two or number three? Because the outlines are very different.
Alright, so you, the fan favorite is number one, right? The one that Nelson did.
Yes, and then I did the next two with the suggestions for edits.
Yeah, I, I think there's too much space in number three, okay? Between the blue and white, blue and white, you see how the town ones are a little tighter? And it shows up better, let's see your mug.
Mm-hmm, yep.
It kind of shows up better with it a little bit tighter.
Mm-hmm.
Versus as much space in between.
Mm-hmm.
So you would pretty much do the same kind of less space as you'd have in number four, which is on the other side, the town one that we currently have.
Mm-hmm.
Darker color, turn your blue into a darker blue.
Fatten up the Menhaden just a little bit.
Fatten up the fish.
Sound like you just need to go to the mayor's house, and y'all get...
And do a propeller.
Sound like what needed happened.
And do a propeller, that's it.
Welcome to committee work.
Okay, how does that, does that feel good to everybody? Is everybody going to wear this around town?
Mike's in line for a shirt. Everybody wants a hat? There we go, we got a hat right here.
Great, thanks so much, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
That was fun.
Thanks.
Alright, do we have any staff comments?
Yes, ma'am. I'll note a couple upcoming events and activities this week. We have the Fall Community Festival in Trunk or Treat at the Boys and Girls Club on October 30th from 4:30 to 6:30. We have trick-or-treating on Ann Street. A reminder that Beaufort PD will be closing the 500 to 800 block of Ann Street from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. on Halloween night. That'll be closed to all vehicular traffic, including golf carts.
Yeah.
And I'll just share that the town plans to submit for the HMGP Advanced Assistant Grant tomorrow, and thank you to Sam Bell and staff for putting that information together.
Great job, good luck. Alrighty, well, I want to just say, Matt, if you're listening, we miss you. I hope you're having a great conference, he's learning quite a bit. Unless there's any further comments, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Subpo.
Got a motion on the floor, all in favor, say aye, and good night.
Look at us, we're at 9:30.
Mayor Stevie, how are you doing?